Hello, I'm Zachary Dolan, production lead at PAC TV. At PAC TV, we believe it is our responsibility to bring informational programming to residents and voters so you can make informed decisions about issues that impact your community and about candidates wishing to serve. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and being committed to an open discussion, sharing your standpoint on important issues facing the town of Pembroke. I'm joined tonight by Melissa Matinzi, programming manager at PAC TV. We will be acting as moderators for this forum. We are also joined by the candidates for Board of Selectmen, Jessica Bradley-Rushing and Stephen Curley. The following format will be used in tonight's forum. Each candidate will be introduced in alphabetical order and will have two minutes to introduce themselves, share why they are running for Board of Selectmen, and tell viewers about their qualifications for the position. The candidates will then be asked several questions related to local issues. We will alternate the first candidate to answer each question, and each will be given two minutes to respond. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes to make their closing remarks. A countdown clock in the studio is being used. We ask that the candidates respect these timelines in order to keep this forum fair and balanced. This will not be a debate. It is an opportunity for candidates to let voters know who they are and where they stand on certain issues. Ready to begin? Begin tonight with your opening remarks. Candidates, you will each have two minutes, and we'll begin with Jessica Bradley-Rushing.
Hi. My name is Jessica Bradley-Rushing, and I'm running for the Board of Selectmen in Pembroke because I believe we need new voices and new ideas in our town government. I grew up in Pembroke, I went to Hobmack Elementary School, and I graduated from Silverlake in the class of 97. I went on to Boston University, where I earned a Bachelor of Science in Communication with a focus on public relations and political science. I moved back to Pembroke after I graduated from BU, but I left again when I enlisted in the Army after 9/11. I moved home last year to Pembroke with my husband and our four kids because I know that Pembroke is a great town to live in, a great place to raise a family, and a great place to grow up. I'm excited to be home, and I really just want to get as involved as possible in town and give back to a place that gave so much to me. I think it is vitally important that we have a wider range of perspectives represented in our town government. If I'm elected, I would be the only woman on the five-member board. I believe that I bring something to the board that it is currently missing, and that my experience, my skills, and my talent would be a benefit to the town. There are several challenges coming up in the town of Pembroke that will have a long-term impact on all the residents, and I think we need to face those challenges with fresh ideas and new voices. I want to thank PAC TV for giving the candidates an opportunity to speak to the voters, and I hope that you'll come out on Saturday, May 18th, and vote for Jessica Bradley-Rushing for Pembroke Select Board. Thank you.
Steven, you now have two minutes.
Okay. I want to thank PAC TV for having me here this evening. My campaign is based on a proven record over the past 20 years of hard work, fiscal expertise, a steady voice of reason, diligence, leadership, and cooperative work with the committees in town. I have spent many hours developing the advisory presentation to the town a week before the town meeting in the past few years. I've attended numerous meetings, both for advisory and also the Select Board and other subcommittees which have been established, so I know I can put the time and effort required. I'm proud to have supported the purchase of hundreds of acres of land, such as Tubbs Meadow, that have been put into conservation over this time. These purchases have kept the land out of development, ensuring the rural atmosphere in this great town. I've also been a major supporter of the schools during this time and have endorsed by most of the school committee members. I understand the good reputation of schools is a major reason people buy in the town. Over the years, I've crossed paths with many wonderful, dedicated volunteers who are the backbone of our town and often underappreciated or not even known. These people volunteer for Open Space Committee, Conservation, Historical Commission, and many other appointed and elected positions. Many of these people I now consider friends. There are nine pages in the town annual report listing all these great volunteers. The biggest issue facing the town right now is the transition to Town Manager. This position now wields much more authority in supervising all the town departments, almost sole authority in setting the budget. We need to get the higher right and then provide the new Town Manager with the tools and support needed to succeed. My 20 years of meeting with boards, committees, and departments has taught me much about how the town operates. I feel this makes me better qualified to provide the leadership in the future. I bring experience and accountability working for you, and I ask that you vote for Stephen Curley for Selectmen on May 18th. Our town needs great leadership.
Thank you, Steven. We'll now move to Melissa for the first question.
Thanks, Zach. The Board of Selectmen should be a representation of all the residents of the town. What specific qualifications or skills would you contribute to enhance the existing governing body? And we'll start with Jessica.
So, I think one of the major reasons why I'm running for the Board of Selectmen is because I believe we need a wider range of perspectives represented on the board. As I said earlier, if I'm elected, I would be the only woman on the board. I have school-aged children who are in the schools currently, and I think that my background in communications also enables me to bring a unique skill set to the board that will enable the board to reach out to more town residents in order to get other people involved who haven't previously been. The current town website has a lot of important information on it, but if it is not easy to find, easy to understand, and in a format that fits with many people's busy lives, it's not always information that is accessed by the town residents. My skill set as a communications professional and my dedication to ensuring that more voices are brought to the decision-making process in Pembroke would make me an asset to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Jessica. Steven, you now have two minutes.
Okay. One of the main things that I bring that's a different skill set is I have a financial background. I deal with the numbers and the money all the time. No other member of the board currently has that, so my skill set meshes in with their... they all have various things that they bring, but I bring that in particular. I've also had 12 years' experience as a chairman at the advisory committee. I've dealt with all the boards and commissions. I know how these things operate. I know the people that are working there. I have a history of treating people fairly and of dealing with all the people at every level of town, be it the school committee, the police and fire, and all of the other smaller departments in town. I've built up a good relationship with a lot of these departments and working with them, and that's one of the things that we have to do going forward is we have to make sure, as a town, that we work together. It has to be a cooperative effort, and I think that over the last few years, we've developed that in town, and I want to make sure that that continues over the next few years.
Thank you, Steven. Zach?
Residents are concerned about the town's financial health. What is your plan on helping to address this in the short and long term? We'll start this time with candidate Curley.
Okay. You're right in my wheelhouse here. One of the things that we really lucked out this year is that the healthcare only came in at 1.5%. Saved us a lot of money, and it really meant that we could do this year everything that we wanted to within the budget. Hopefully, that continues, but in the short term and the long term, really have a couple of different focuses. Short term, right now, we have, you know, for the next year, we seem to be in pretty good state. We lucked out. We only have about a $225,000 snow and ice deficit from this past year, so it means that we'll have more money next year in free cash for the capital plan. And if the... as the process goes through in the golf club, in the short term, one of the things we'll get back, because it was under a 61A, they were paying a reduced tax, so we have a five-year rollback. It'll be about a $197,000 check to the town. Obviously, long term, if this thing goes through under the cost of development with the over 55, we'll end up getting a significant tax revenue increase. One of the other things that we have to do, and we have been doing more of that recently, is trying to get people to invest in the Office Park area and bring new business in there. We have a couple of buildings going up now. This is one of the areas that has very little use of any other resources in the town, but they pay a significant amount of taxes. So, that's a big area that we have to move forward. Thank you.
Jessica Bradley-Rushing, you now have two minutes.
Can you just repeat the question, please? Thank you.
Residents are concerned about the town's financial health. What is your plan on helping to address this in the short and long term?
Thank you. So, in my opinion, one of the biggest issues facing the town is that we need to find ways to generate more revenue to address our budget shortfalls. As a parent with kids in the school, the idea that we are going to be losing positions in the school next year is distressing. I feel that it is unacceptable that year after year, we face potential budget shortfalls in the schools that cause us to lose positions, and I think that we need to think of creative and different ways to generate more revenue for the town so that we are able to fund our schools fully. I think, long term, there are projects and challenges that face the town, including some of the infrastructure in the town center, that we need to be realistic about what needs to be done to address those problems. There are multiple buildings, including the community center, the town hall, the police department, the fire station, and the council on aging, all of which need repair and renovation. In order to make those projects happen, we need to have a master plan and a long-term plan for how we're going to bring in more money for the town, and I think that it's important that we look at some different ideas and maybe examine what other towns in the area have done to generate revenue to enable them to complete some projects of that type. So, in my opinion, short term, we need to think of immediate ways to generate revenue for the town without further straining the residents of town, and in the long term, we need to have a better master plan for how we're going to address all the projects that we know are coming and that we have to find ways to accommodate.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks, Zach. In your role as a member of the Board of Selectmen, how can the board improve communication to residents? Jessica, you're first.
So, this is actually one of the things that I think is most important to me if I am elected to the Board of Selectmen. In speaking to residents around town, in the course of the last few weeks and months since I've started this campaign, it's clear to me that there are people who want to be involved and want to be engaged, but don't necessarily know how. I work right now as the Director of Communications for a national nonprofit organization, and in that role, I push information out to our supporters in order to enable them to be involved. I have experience across multiple platforms of media, including traditional media, print, press media, and I also am a social media manager for accounts like Facebook and Twitter, which have... on Facebook, we have about 600,000 followers, and on Twitter, we have about 30,000. So, I understand how to manage that information. I think that it is important for the town government to operate in a more accessible way so that people who are interested in getting involved are able to access information in a way that is digestible for their busy lives. So, while it's great that the Board of Selectmen's meetings are televised and available on Facebook, one of the things that I would like to do is do a quick video recap after each Selectmen's meeting. This is something that I did earlier in my campaign, and I received a lot of positive feedback because people didn't realize what issues were being discussed at the meeting and didn't have the time to go back and watch the videos after the fact. I think that modernizing the way that the town communicates with its residents would enable more people to get involved and engaged in a way that fits in with their busy lives.
Thank you, Jessica. Steven, you're next.
Okay. It's a difficult area, trying to get communication out, because one of the things, of course, is the local newspaper reaches about 17% of the households, and there's really a difficulty in reaching the majority of the residents. No single platform will reach everyone. The town has improved their outreach in terms of Twitter and Facebook and so forth in the past few years. It's really a difficult thing to get people to stop when they're going right through the Facebook and trying to actually read it, and, you know, all we can do really is to continue to try and expand every avenue that we have, expand the social media platforms that we reach out to, and try to make sure that we, you know, reach out to all of the various groups. Unfortunately, if somebody doesn't follow a particular... if they don't follow the town or they don't follow a particular person, no matter what you do, you're not going to reach them, and it's an unfortunate thing in today's society that they're backing off away from what might be considered a traditional news source because that was one that we used to be able to rely on to get word out, and unfortunately, as we've gone to the Facebook and such, you can only reach, even with that, a certain number of people, but the town is expanding that usage, and we're trying to get more information out.
Thank you, Steven. Zach, to you.
The next question, you're going to be each given three minutes for your reply. There are several... there are a large number of projects pending for the town of Pembroke, such as the fire station move, the new community center, the possible move or renovation of the police station, and other department facility needs, including DPW, COA, and town hall. What do you think are the most important projects for the town, and what should be done to move them forward? Candidate Curley, you'll be first.
Okay. Obviously, the police and fire stations are probably the top priority, and one of the reasons for that is if you looked at the presentations that the police chief and the fire chief have made, I know they came into our committee and actually presented it and showed us the pictures, they're not in conformity with the regulations. They, you know, it was when they would build these structures, they didn't have anything in mind in terms of some of the regulations that are in now. Not only are they cramped within these things, but they don't have the correct facilities to do what they need. So, these two things have to be given the top priority. The community center is something that would include the COA if it's built, but again, it's something that's still... they're working on it. It's something that's going through a lot of variations, and I've attended the last couple of meetings, and there's still a lot of flux in terms of their planning. The DPW presented what they needed last year. I haven't seen any update on it, and, you know, they had said that they were going to be doing something to update it, but I haven't seen it this year. But I still say the police and fire are by far and away the most important because their facilities are totally and absolutely inadequate right now. They don't have the proper facility and to meet the regulations for a juvenile offender has to be separated from everyone else, and they don't have the separate structure for jail cells because when it was built, they only needed one set of jail cells, things like that. There's a lot of... that has happened in the past 30, 40 years since the station was built. They really have to get that up to date. Same thing in the fire station. There's a lot of things that have come down the road since that was built, new regulations, et cetera and so forth, and they really have to get it up to date, and the inadequacies of these stations are striking. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, you now have three minutes.
Thank you. So, since starting my campaign, I have reached out and gone in toward both the police station and the fire department to actually see the facilities and see what it is that our town servants are working in. So, both the buildings, I've seen firsthand the condition that they're in. Police and fire departments were both built in the mid-'70s, and they were not built in a way that enabled them to grow to meet the demands of the town as the town has grown. In my opinion, both of those buildings should be prioritized as two of the first infrastructure projects that the town needs to address. We can't expect the fire department and the police department to continue to work in the conditions that they're currently working in and be successful at their jobs. I also think that the community center is an important project that could really revitalize the entire town center. I grew up on Queensburg Road, and I used to walk to Pembroke Center all the time as a kid and a teenager, and I know how much I would have loved to have had a really active community center there that I could have gone to. I think with the Community Center Task Force, some of the plans that they've put out have been really, really impressive. There have been options where there's commercial space, so you may have a couple shops in the community center, some options with, obviously, recreational space, and then also maybe moving the senior center into the new building and allowing that to expand and serve a bigger population. I think that the current next step for the community center is that they will be performing a site plan. There's money to be allocated at town meeting on May 14th that will enable the Community Center Task Force to have a site plan done that will really give us a better idea of what's feasible in that space and what's possible. So, in my opinion, once we have that plan in hand, we'll better be able to decide what makes sense in the center of town, but that it is vitally important that we move forward with renovating and repairing those structures, the police station, the fire department, and the community center, in order to really make the town center operate well for all the residents and the town employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Residents are concerned that the budget for the school department has increased each year and is currently more than half of the total budget for the town, yet enrollment has been on a downward trend. If elected, how would you address these concerns? Jessica, you're first.
So, I agree that the school budget is an ongoing issue. I have three sons in North Pembroke Elementary School right now, and I understand that the school budget has increased over the last few years while enrollment has decreased. I know that the school is working hard to provide services to all the students regardless of what services those students need, and that those services are often what increases the budget. As a parent, I struggle with the idea that the school budget should be further cut. When we're always facing what... I mean, next year, we're facing what could be 12 lost positions in the schools, and I don't think that having a strong school system is a benefit for only the students and parents. A strong school system actually benefits every resident of town. It increases our property values, and it creates a sense of community that makes other people want to live in Pembroke. So, while I believe that it is important for the school budget to stay within a certain range, I also know that we need to seek out ways to provide more money to the schools so that they continue to provide the services that they need to provide, whether that comes in the form of increased state aid, whether the Chapter 70 funding that we receive from the state, that formula needs to be revised. It hasn't been changed since the early '90s, or whether we look at ways to provide additional services that may not incur additional expenses.
Thank you, Jessica. Steven, you have two minutes.
Okay. I don't know... can this be picked up on the... by the camera? Yeah? Okay. I'd just like to point out, you know, some of the things you mentioned. The blue line here is the state aid, Chapter 70 money, and it's been fairly flat over the past few years, but the reason that's being flat is, as you mentioned, there's been a reduction in the enrollment. We actually have 705 fewer children in the school system right now than 10 years ago. It's a 20% drop. During that time, though, you can see this red line where the school funding by the town has been going up at a radical place. The state aid has increased by 0.83% a year in the past 10 years. The town spending has increased 4.6% a year. So, it's not a matter of the town not putting a priority to the schools. You know, we've worked with the schools, and we've really tried to make sure that everything is going on. A lot of the cuts are coming because there's fewer and fewer children in the schools so that there's less need for the teachers. There's actually, you know, the class sizes are keeping within the ranges that the school committee sets. So, we've really... the town has made the schools a priority. 4.6% a year, when we can go up by 2.5% a year on our tax rate, shows that the town is making the schools a priority, and I think that we will continue to do so.
Thank you, Steven. Zach?
In your opinion, what are the biggest challenges that Pembroke faces, and how will you help to address them? Start with candidate Curley.
One of the biggest challenges that we've had in the past few years is really the growth in the healthcare. We really lucked out this year. It only went up 1.5%. It saved us hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we've had it go up by over 10% in some years. When that happens, we can get a million-dollar increase in one year. It's something that is national. We don't have much control over it. We are doing everything we can to try and control it and try and keep things down and trying to plan for it, but it is one of the biggest challenges. As long as that thing is sort of a wild card, it really creates a pressure on the rest of the budget. If healthcare right now represents a huge percentage of our budget, it represents, at this point, if I can get this exactly where it is, the... okay, the benefits and insurance represent 21% of our budget right now. It was 18% in 2009. It's been growing at a rate of over 7% a year, and that's one of the things that... in discussions with the Town Manager and discussions with the Selectmen, it's one of the things that we talk about a lot, what we can do, and it's a very difficult area, but that's one that we have to address every year as it comes up. Thank you.
Jessica, you now have two minutes.
So, I think that there are two major issues that are affecting the town most significantly. The first issue, and I believe that most town residents who I've spoken to have agreed with me on this, is money, basically. The town needs to find ways to generate revenue in order to provide the services and support that are needed within the town. So, in my opinion, it is important that we look at maybe some creative ways for bringing more revenue into the town, and I think when people hear the concept of generating revenue, they automatically think that we need to raise taxes, which is absolutely not the only way to bring money into town. I think that the second issue that we have is a lack of involvement and a lack of engagement, but it's not because residents of town don't want to be involved. It's because they don't know how to be involved. I think because we... because so many of the things that the town government has done have been done the same way for so many years, the people who are new to town or who haven't been involved previously find that they don't know how to get involved, they don't know how to reach out, and they don't know who to ask to find out how to get involved. So, ultimately, one of my goals, if I am elected to the Board of Selectmen, would be to bring more voices into the decision-making process and to get more people involved earlier so that we have a more engaged group of residents in town who are better able to make the decisions that benefit the rest of the town. Thank you.
Jessica. Melissa?
Thank you. For the time we have left, we want to give you the opportunity to either speak about a topic that has not been addressed tonight or to speak to questions or comments that were addressed earlier in the forum. Again, this is not a debate. You'll have two minutes, and we'll start with Jessica.
Thank you. So, I would like to address one of the things that was brought up earlier, and the idea is in relation to how the town can better communicate. So, one of the things that Mr. Curley mentioned is that no single platform can reach everyone when it comes to media, and I absolutely agree with that. I think that's why we need to do a better job of reaching out across multiple media platforms to enable people to get that information regardless of how they seek information out. So, whether you look for traditional media like a newspaper, or you are used to coming into town hall to get information, or if you use Facebook or Twitter, regardless of how you look for information about what's going on in town, it's important that you be able to find that easily. Because of the work I do in communications, I have a good understanding of how to get that information out in the most effective ways. Another thing that I'd like to address is the idea that... is the idea that the people who have dedicated so much time and effort to the town government have... people work in town government, and it is not always a job that is full of fame and money. I think that people dedicate a lot of hours and time to making the town a better place, but that we don't have different voices and perspectives always represented in those committees and boards. I think it's important that we bring new ideas to the table and that we do that in a way that will enable us to move forward to the future while maintaining all the things that are best about Pembroke. That small-town feel and the strong sense of community can be maintained while still looking toward the future and making sure that Pembroke still has those things for generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steven, you now have your two minutes.
Okay. One of the things that the advisory committee has been pushing with the Board of Selectmen has been planning, and I want to get out there that we have a five-year financial plan that was put in place about a year ago that's going to be ongoing, and we've just gotten a nice formalized capital plan in place. I want people to familiarize themselves with that. These plans are on the town website. It's one of the things that will help people be informed. In terms of the makeup of various towns, bodies, and everything, it is one of the things that whenever I'm in front of the Board of Selectmen or a town meeting or whatever, and I'm mentioning that we have openings on advisory, I also mention we don't want a bunch of number people. We want people from different aspects. It is an important aspect. We have a wide variety of people, and very few of them are really number-oriented, and that is important in any board and committee in town, is to have a wide variety. If you have an interest, we usually have something in town that you can do, and it is a good point. And, you know, at that, I think that the Town Manager, again, it's probably the single most important thing right now if we get this right because this person has total authority in supervising in the town, total authority on the budget. We really need to get this right and support this guy, or person, whoever it is that gets hired. We really need to support them and get this done right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. Zach, to you.
Candidates, we're now going to give you two minutes for closing remarks. Feel free to talk directly to your camera to address your voters and constituents. We'll start with Jessica.
Thank you very much. So, first, I want to say thank you again to PAC TV for allowing the candidates to have a forum to let voters know who they are and why they're running. I think that these connections are really important, and I... I think that these connections are really important, and I hope to continue to make them on a personal level out in town. I am running for the Board of Selectmen ultimately because I believe that my voice will help make Pembroke a better place. I believe that I bring to the board something that it's currently missing and that while I have not worked directly in Pembroke's town government, I do have 20 years of experience in government, politics, and communications. What we need now are new ideas and perspectives to complement the experience that already exists on the Board of Selectmen. I worked in government as... I'm sorry. I worked in the government in two different congressional offices, one in Capitol Hill and one in Boston. I've worked as a Department of Defense consultant, and I work now as a Director of Communications for a national nonprofit. I think that my skills and my talents will make the Board of Selectmen a more effective board and will also help draw in more people from around town with different ideas and different voices that will help make the entire town of Pembroke a better place for all the residents, whether you're a young family with little kids or a senior who's lived in Pembroke for 60-plus years. While I believe that... while I believe that the transition to the town manager form of government is going to have a big impact, I also know that it will... with the Board of Selectmen guiding that process, that the transition will be something that makes the town a stronger place and that the town manager will be able to guide the town with the Board of Selectmen by their side. So, thank you very much, and please come out on May 18th to vote Jessica Bradley Rushing for the Pembroke Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Jessica. Stephen, you now have two minutes for closing remarks.
I have spent 20 years protecting Pembroke taxpayers. I have attended countless meetings, spending almost every Monday night at town hall, volunteering for the residents of our great town. Over the years, I've worked hard to make sure the school's have adequate resources and be treated fairly in the budget process. I publicly supported the override for the schools a few years ago. I've supported the purchase of open space to protect the rural feel of the town. I will stay active and informed on the issues that the town faces over the next few years and beyond, attending meetings outside of the Select Board, volunteering to be the Select Board representative on subcommittees, as I've done for years with advisory. This is not a one-night-a-week job. There are weeks that I've been out four nights on town business. I also have a history in volunteering in other activities. Treasurer of the Pembroke Historical Society, the Fish Frye, by the way, is this Sunday, May 5th. Everyone come? Treasurer of Pembroke Celebrates, put on the great fireworks display. Treasurer of the Pembroke Public Library Foundation. Chairman of my Parish Finance Council. President of the St. Vincent de Paul Conference. We gave out over $300,000 in food, free food from our pantry last year, and many, many other activities over the years. Let me be your voice on the Select Board. I bring experience and accountability working for you. I ask that you vote for Stephen Curley for Selectmen on May 18th. Our great town needs great leadership.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, both of our candidates, for participating in this forum. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of our forum, please visit our website, pacTV.org/pembrokeelection for replay times on the Pembroke Government Channel and to watch the forum on YouTube. From Melissa, myself, candidates, and all of us at PAC TV, thank you for taking the time to join us to learn more about your candidates. And please, ensure your voice is heard. Cast your vote on Saturday, May 18th.